KPTS welcomes comments from the public on its broadcast of the county commission hearings. Viewers are invited to write to county commission broadcast, KPTS 320 West 21st Street, Wichita, Kansas 67203.
Good morning and welcome to the December 5th, 2018 Board of County Commissioners meeting. I'm Kate Flavin, Public Information Officer with Sedgwick County. Commissioners, this morning I have a few videos to share with you, both good news stories. And so I'll start here with the Office of the Medical Director.
Welcome you today. Having a safe and secure community is very important to Sedgwick County. The Office of Medical Director plays a key role in providing clinical leadership and oversight for all aspects of pre-hospital patient care. This applies to all medical providers and agencies throughout the emergency medical system that we have here in Sedgwick County. Some of you may remember this building as the former Murdoch Tag Office, but through extensive remodeling, we're thrilled to have Dr. Gallagher and his team here in such a great facility today. The entire project took approximately five months to complete, total cost for $458,550.
Good afternoon. I'm Dr. John Gallagher. I'm the System Medical Director for City of Wichita and Sedgwick County and the very excited and proud new occupant of this building. While we are extremely grateful to Chief Leek and Fire District Number One for having housed our department for so long, it is just incredible to be in a facility like this. We manage the pre-hospital protocols, the guidelines which all of the EMTs and paramedics use to provide patient care, but we also provide the testing that is required to ensure competency within our providers. Everyone who works within our system has to pass written tests on clinical knowledge as well as the protocol familiarity, and then they have to pass physical hands-on testing to make sure that they have the necessary physical skills to perform the procedures appropriate for their level. And then, at the advanced level, our advanced EMTs and paramedics come into this simulation center to perform simulated patient encounters to make sure that they can take that mental knowledge and apply it in a real-world setting. So this facility will dramatically improve our effectiveness.
So all five commissioners came together to make this a reality for our Office of Medical Director today, and I want to thank all five commissioners, the other four, for help making this happen.
We are in the outdoor area of our simulation center. We have the ambulance simulator right behind me. We can bring the crews into a realistic environment and have them run calls and have it very realistic to the environment that they're in every day.
This is the control room, and so all of the information from out in the simulation center is wired back here. One of the things that's important to quality testing is that the person who's in front of the camera doesn't feel like that. They have to feel and believe like they are out in the real world delivering real patient care. And so by bringing all of that information outside, piping it to a control room, we can have the exact same outcomes, but without that person feeling like they've got a false environment. In the face of an emergency, you don't get to pick your EMT or your paramedic. So one of our jobs is to make sure that anyone who shows up at your door, or at your car accident, or at your place of work, is somebody that you would be happy choosing to provide your health care.
And now I would like to invite up Dr. John Gallagher.
Good morning, Doctor.
Good morning, Commissioners. Always a pleasure to be asked before you. I have very brief remarks, mostly in thanks for all of the work that you've done for getting us into the new building and continuing to support our work. As you know, I'm very proud of the OMD staff and the outcomes that we've been able to achieve. Our relationships with the city and with the hospitals have never been stronger, and we continue to drive the system forward. We are extremely proud to be able to claim that we are the group that puts forward excellence in patient care to anyone who comes within our borders and needs our services. So thank you so much for being supportive of that through the new building, but also through the initiatives that we push forward. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gallagher, and thank you for being here today with us. We are very strong supporters of our entire first responder groups of folks. About two years ago, when Commissioner O'Donnell and I came onboard as new commissioners, we had an opportunity to start touring all the different facilities in Sedgwick County. And one of the first facilities we saw was where you were working out of, which was not something that we needed to have for our folks to be trying to train. And I know Commissioner O'Donnell and I both pushed very hard, and thankfully, all five of our commissioners came together and said this is the right thing to do, and you have a fantastic facility now to train our EMTs. Thank you.
Thanks again. We look forward to the future.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right, and one final video for you this morning. As you know, that the East Side Tag Office will open Monday morning at noon.
Welcome to the new Tag Office located at 5620 East Kellogg Drive in Wichita. This space will be a lot larger. We will have a total of 25 clerks working in this location. We will be able to provide better efficiencies to better serve our customers. In this location, they'll be able to do any ADA transactions, registration renewals, and title work. You will not be able to get your driver's license here. But the other addition is the Kansas High Whipple Troll is not going to be located in this location. The three satellites that we are consolidating are at the Brittany Center at 21st and Woodlawn. The other one in Wichita is located at 21st and Mays Road, behind Delwin's at Chadsworth Shopping Center. And then our third one is in Derby, located at 212 Greenway. We felt that as a managerial decision, it would be better to combine those three offices into one larger office after we've seen such great success at the 2525 West Douglas Tag Office. It's going to reduce some staff time. It's going to reduce stress time. It's going to improve morale, and it's just going to be better for the citizens overall. I know all the small towns would love to have their own Tag Office. So what we're working on right now is the possibility of getting a kiosk solution. Johnson County has got them in their Tag Offices, but I don't know if theirs is the solution that I'm looking for for Sedgwick County. I've been working with Kansas Department of Revenue on some different options, but it'd be very limited to where we could put those kiosks. So that's why we're going to do a request for proposals, see what other options are out there, to get us the best fit at the best price for our county. You can renew by mail or via the ICANN app. Customers are welcome to go to the office at 2525 West Douglas. I also highly recommend not waiting until the last day of the month to come. That's when we seem to always be the busiest. We always have been, and we always will be. One of the best things that we've ever implemented in Sedgwick County is the online virtual waiting system, Q-List. You can go out to the county website, and you can get on via any kind of electronic device. You can get your virtual spot in line. It will send you text messages on how long your wait times are, and it's been very, very, very helpful. The satellite offices at Brittany, Chadsworth, and Derby will close at end of business on Friday, December 7th, and then the new Kellogg Tag Office will open at noon on Monday, December This new location will be more convenient for our customers and staff. I am happy that we are finally able to complete this project.
All right, and Commissioners, on your agenda this morning, you have an appointment to the Sedgwick County Animal Care Advisory Board, a public hearing regarding a dangerous or unsafe structure. Commissioners will discuss a zoning case, then they'll consider a resolution amending the debt financing policy, and the Board of Bits and Contracts will have their report to deliver as well. Commissioners, this afternoon, from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m., right here in this room on the third floor of the main courthouse, we will have our holiday party, and anyone from the public is also invited to attend. So with that, Chairman, I will let you start the meeting.
Well, thank you, Kate. Thank you very much. I want to welcome everyone that's attending our meeting in person today, and those that are online and on KPTS today. Also want to thank our two secretaries, Lisa and Carol, because they're the ones that decorated this room yesterday. It's fantastic, and it makes us ready for our party that we're going to have for the staff this afternoon. So I want to pass on thanks to them. At this time, I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners for Wednesday, December 5th, 2018. Next item, please.
invocation to be observed by a moment of silence. Please remain standing for the flag salute.
Please join me in a moment of silence. Please join me with the pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Next item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Present.
Commissioner Ranza?
Present.
Commissioner Howell?
Present.
Commissioner Unruh?
Present.
Chairman Dennis?
Present.
Next item, please.
Public agenda.
I have one person signed up to speak on the public agenda, but they want to speak during the zoning case, and that is quite all right. If anyone else in this room wished to speak on the public agenda. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, next item.
Appointments. Item A, resolution appointing Laura Atkins to the Sedgwick County Animal Care Advisory Board.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mike LaPunya, interim county councillor. Laura Atkins is Commissioner O'Donnell's appointment to the Sedgwick County Animal Care Advisory Board. Each of you have two appointments to this board. This is to fulfill the unexpired term of a previous appointment of Daniel Cruz, who resigned on May 16th of this year. The resolution is in proper form, and we'd ask that you approve the resolution.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that we adopt the resolution appointing Laura Atkins to the Animal Care Advisory Board, and I would just like to mention that I appreciate her willingness to serve in this capacity due to her love of animals.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranza?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye. Congratulations.
Good morning, Commissioners. Raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Sedgwick County Animal Care Advisory Board, so help me God.
I do.
All right, congratulations.
Thank you. I would just like to thank the Commissioners for giving me an opportunity to serve my community, and something that I love and feel very passionate about.
Well, thank you, and thank you for your willingness to serve. And, Mr. Clerk, thank you for being here today to swear in. Next item, please.
New business. Item B, hearing for structure at 4224 Green Haven claimed to be dangerous or unsafe.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Chris Labram, MABCD. Public hearing today for the structure located at 422 South Green Haven. This is a single-family, single-story structure in the Sunview Improvement Area. The structure was fire damaged on the 20th of July in the summer as part of the normal process for that. We collected 15% of the insurance proceeds, so that took place on September 7th, and in the amount of $6,750. We, at that point, of course, began to try to make contact with the property owners to help them with any plan they had to remove the structure. It was a total loss, considered a total loss by the insurance, and our evaluation determined that there was no way to salvage it. It had to be removed. We understand that shortly after the fire, the couple who owns the property departed the local area and has not returned, maybe other than to quickly visit family. So we have not been able to make contact. Nothing was done with that in the 45 days that we normally allot there for Resolution 142 back on the 10th of October was considered by the Commission, and that is when we set the date for this hearing. At that point, we obviously published that and sent some certified mail to those with any tie to the property. We did receive a return from one of those. My understanding is that's the daughter-in-law of the owner, and that gave us an updated mailing address locally for the owner, so we at least have an avenue for correspondence, but still have not received any contact from them. So some updated pictures, there were previous, the previous pictures of the structure were in Legastar. These are from last week. Shows that, again, not much damage to the front, but when you go to the back of the structure, severely damaged on both sides. And there, a little bit of a close-up, you can see the damage goes well into the interior of the structure. So at this point, it remains unsafe. The resolution before you today would provide MABCD the authority to retain a contractor and proceed with the removal of the structure. That would be the structure only, nothing else on the property. This would not occur any earlier than the 21st of December, so that would still give a few weeks for the owner to initiate action on their own. The cost of that cannot exceed the amount of insurance proceeds that we have, so it would not be a cost to the county. We have retained bids from three contractors that all meet that criteria. If there's any excess fund, if there are any excess funds at the end of that, those would be returned to the owner. So with that, Commissioners, it's a recommendation that you receive any public comment, close the public hearing, and approve the resolution to remove the unsafe structure with the insurance proceeds we've retained.
Thank you. Before I open it up, public comment, is there any questions from any of the Commissioners this morning? Seeing none, I would like to open public comment on the issue of the hearing for the structure at 4224 Green Haven. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on this item? Anyone wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment. I make a motion that we adopt the resolution and authorize me to sign. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
I'm sorry, just a moment. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Chairman. I just had a couple of questions. How normal is this? Have we done this type of thing before?
This is the first since I've been here, sir. It does happen on occasion. Legal would probably be better suited to give an exact answer on that.
Assistant County Councillor Justin Waggoner. Commissioner Howell, on your question, in terms of items that come in front of you and the other Commissioners on this, we probably have only roughly one a year. It depends on the year, of course. We do have a handful per year where the property owner ends up taking care of this. We may get the insurance proceeds. They end up cleaning up the property, making it to where it's no longer dangerous or unsafe, and they get their insurance proceeds back. And so that would never come in front of you. We'd probably have three or four of those a year on average, I'd guess. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I just had a couple more questions. And so Director Labram, have we been, as the owner of this property, communicated to us in any way that they have any intention here?
No, Commissioner. We've talked with neighbors and some extended family. Again, our understanding is that they've departed the local area and left it to us to do what we will.
Do we know, was this an occupied residence when the fire happened? Do we know?
That is my understanding, yes, sir.
Was it the owner that was living there, or somebody else?
My understanding is that it was the owner.
Okay, all right. I don't think I have any other questions. This is in my district. I would tell you that I think this is numerous properties in the area that have gone away. One of them got turned into a little park, but there are some vacant properties in the neighborhood there as well, where the land is there, but the house is gone. So I know this has happened numerous times in that community, but obviously needs to be dealt with. So I guess I'll be supportive of this this morning, but I just wanted to clarify those things. Thank you so much, Chairman.
Thank you. I see no other comments. We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranza?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye. Next item, please.
Item C, a zoning case to rezone property from rural residential to general office located at the northwest corner of East 101st Street North and North 47th Street East.
Dale Miller, Planning Staff. The application area, as you can see there is on the slide, and it is 5.14 acres, and it's located at the northwest corner of East 101st Street North and North 47th Street, or for those folks that are in Wichita Oliver. The applicant is seeking general office zoning in order to build an office building to support his construction company that he's been operating out of his home, and his home is located approximately a mile to the east of this location. The property is zoned our rural residential, as is all the land that you can see surrounding the area. That's what the light green color represents. They have filed a plat, the Superior Excavating Edition, that has been approved by Planning Commission and has been turned over to their agent to go through the process to ultimately appear before you at some point here in the near future. As you can see on the aerial today, it's just farm ground, as is most of the land in the general area. There are a number of homesteads that you can see here to the west, southwest, and then further off the map is to the north, and then here. And here, the closest one is approximately 100 feet across the intersection here, catty Planning Commission approved this request with a vote of 10-0. However, protests equalling, 33.29% have been filed. Most of the protests focus on the fact that this is all currently farm ground, a rural part of the county, and that granting general office zoning is out of character with the activities that are going on in the rural area there as they see it, and that homeowners, particularly those on the larger lot, view this as they moved out here to get the rural atmosphere, and that the introduction of general office zoning and a general office building at this location is not consistent with that expectation. Property is not located within Kechai or any of the other cities' urban area of influence, so it only went to the Planning Commission. The applicant did submit a site plan, and so they're showing this as being the lot and developing an office building pretty much on the corner. With that, I try and answer questions. I believe the applicant's agent is here, and I believe there are folks that may want to speak based on what you said on the public agenda comments.
Thank you. Do any Commissioners have any questions on this issue? Okay, we'll turn it over to the public. Before that we start talking with the public, I need to declare that I've had ex parte contact on this case and that I have not, does not affect my decision-making process. Commissioner Ranza?
Also want to say I've had ex parte communications with the applicant, as well as several people that live in the area through phone calls and emails, and I'll make my decision based upon the information.
Any other Commissioners wish to declare? Commissioner Unruh?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, I've had ex parte communication with the agent for the applicant, and also by email with some of the protesters of this item.
Thank you. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Chairman. I think I've received emails from Cynthia Akagi, I'm sorry, I'm saying that correctly, and Penny Clement. I've not even read the emails yet. I was hoping to do that, but I didn't have time to get to them, so I received those, but I've not responded to those in any way, and I will obviously make my decision today based on information presented at this hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Donnell?
I'm sure you know what I'm going to say. I also have had some ex parte, just email, no oral communication, only emails.
Thank you. Applicant or agent, would you like to speak?
My name is Seawood Watson from the law firm of Fulton Siegkin here in the community, and I represent the applicant, Mr. Chris Bernhardt, who is the owner of Superior Excavation and who made the request for the zoning change. I have standing here with me today, Mr. Chris Bohm, who is from Garber Engineering and is the engineer that has participated in this process and spoke at the Planning Commission meeting. And also, I brought with me today, Mr. Jim Albertson, who is the architect who has prepared the documents that, some of the documents which we will be looking at today. I don't think it's necessary for me to belabor this, but I would point out, as Mr. Miller said, that this was, appeared before, was presented at the Planning Commission, and there was a 10-0 vote in favor of this application. The reason I point that out is because at that Planning Commission, and subsequent to that, after the protest was filed, we met with some of the protesters and owners to ascertain whether there were any different concerns that were raised during the Planning Commission process. And we had a robust discussion with the owners and the protesters, and at least it is my assessment that there was nothing new that we learned in that process. And most of their concern, all of their concerns are considered by the existing code and the ordinance, and they did present a couple of proposals to us for changes that were not acceptable to the applicant. One primarily being that we would put a restrictive covenant on the property. Of course, we considered that, and we don't think it'd be appropriate and prepared to discuss that in this circumstance. We don't believe that the change, the zoning change from rural residential to general office would create a huge difference in the character of the property or the area that is being discussed. And I'll let Mr. Albertson show you what we're talking about in that circumstance, in terms of what we propose and how their concerns will be cared for. Most of their concerns generally relate to character and change, generally relate to lighting and parking, and generally relate to the impact on the flood plain, all of which is considered and covered by the existing code, and all of which is considered and covered by our plans. I think that Mr. Albertson should talk a little bit about our proposal and about our plans, so that you have an idea of what's going on as we engage in this discussion today. Jim?
Good morning, Mr. Albertson.
Good morning. My name is Jim Albertson, architect on the project. I made just a few brief notes. I made just a few brief notes concerning this. One thing we tried to do was to, I know it's a rural area, we tried to blend it in with that area. You notice that it has pitched roof. We have brick facade on the front. We have metal, horizontal metal siding on some of the sides of the building, and should blend in with what typically you'd see in a rural area. Parking is set back from the street, anywhere from two to three, and the building is set back 200 to 300 feet, so it's not pressed right up against that intersection. The house across the intersection that's presently there is fairly close to that intersection. This will be set back quite a ways. We do have other drawings that show there's fairly extensive drives to get to the parking area. Parking area will be screened by a five-to-seven-foot berm surrounding that will block off the intersection, so that basically you're going to see the top of the building and not the cars that are being parked there. Lighting is all face downward, shouldn't project outward from the site. I think that's about it without getting into too much more detail.
Any questions from the commissioner for Mr. Albertson? Seeing none, thanks, sir.
Thank you. Thank you. I do, I would point out again that Mr. Bohm is here to answer any questions, and I, at least from our perspective, we're prepared to answer any questions in terms of responding to anything that is said today. But we believe that this is the appropriate change, that the change is not significant, that anything that we would do would be in character with the area. Change from rural residential to general office is a minor change compared to what we might have requested, like limited commercial, and it's just simply not going to impact them in the way we, negatively in the way that has been previously articulated. Thank you for your time, and I'm prepared to answer any questions if there are any.
Any questions at all? Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a couple of questions. Is this, are these gravel dirt roads on the 101st and 47th Street?
These are paved roads, and we have a picture we can show you, but they're, and it's the intersection that is paved, and one of the reasons why this, if you look at the comments and the minutes from the Planning Commission, that's one of the reasons this corner was chose, because it's already paved, both 101st and Oliver, and so there's already traffic there.
Very good. And then I'm curious about the services. You plan on using well water in the lagoon or Kechai water and sewer services? How do you plan on doing that?
Sure. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Chris Bohm from Garver. We represent the applicant for the subdivision plating and the zone case initially. There's rural water that will be used for domestic service, and then the sewage disposal on the site will be per county standards, alternative septic sewer.
Okay, all right, thank you. That's all my questions. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. I don't see any further questions at this time. We appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, Cynthia Alcagi, I hope I pronounced her right closely. You have asked to speak, and this is the time to do it.
Alcagi, you were very close.
Very good.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm speaking on behalf today of the landowners surrounding this land, and we did meet with Mr. Bernhardt's attorney last week to address our concerns, and he suggested we send some of those concerns to him in an email, which we did. And then it was either a day or two days later, Mr. Bernhardt via Facebook invited us to meet with him personally, make an appointment, come up to his office, and we planned to do that. We just have not had that time between that time and this meeting to do that. He's put forth a great building. He has already the rest of the rural land in Alfalfa. But our concern is that once a parcel is deemed general office, it makes it easier for general office for other parcels, once that happens. And 30 years down the road, when, you know, Kechai comes out and it's all built up and everything, that's maybe not an issue, and most of us will be passed on by then. But right now, that's a big issue. And the reason I'm speaking today is I would just like to ask too if you could postpone this vote until your next meeting, so we have time to meet with Mr. Bernhardt personally, and you have time to consider our emails that we sent you. Penny Clement summed up most of our issues, and so just, I'm asking if it could be possibly tabled to your next meeting.
Thank you. Do any commissioners have any questions? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Does anyone else in the audience wish to speak on this issue today? Even though you didn't sign up to speak, you're welcome to speak. Seeing no one, I'll bring it back to the bench. Commissioner Renzo, would you like to?
Well, I just want to know if the applicant wants to respond to her request for a delay, or somebody representing him.
We don't think a delay is necessary. Certainly, we'll continue dialoguing with the residents because Mr., and I failed to introduce Mr. Bernhardt, he is here today. Mr. Bernhardt wants to be a good neighbor, and so he'll continue to dialogue with them about this business and anything that he does out there, but we think that this process needs to move forward today.
Thank you.
I have a question for our attorneys. The emails that we got, I sent you, can we enter those into the record, or?
Justin Waggoner, Assistant County Counselor, and Commissioner Renzo, to your question, it's fine to enter those emails into the record, yes.
Do you have those available to do?
I do, yes, yes, Commissioner Renzo.
All right.
Old habits die hard.
Do you have any comments on postponement? I mean, I'm not quite sure what we would gain by that. I don't know how long this process has been going on.
Sure. The request has been made by some of the property owners. They didn't articulate any of the items that they would want to be considered. I think if the applicant had outright said, yes, we're fine with postponing this, I don't think there's any concerns there. They're only asking for a week, so it's not an extended amount of time. But I think you could say if you wanted to allow them to discuss this, they could. But there is no requirement that you defer this. I think if you want to take it up today, you could. If there were conditions that the applicants, or I'm sorry, the neighbors were asking you to consider or add to this, then, you know, if there are additional conditions that weren't imposed or recommended by the Planning Commission, if you would seek to add those into your vote, that would require a vote of four commissioners to override the Planning Commission's recommendation. I don't know if that helps answer, I have somewhat opened it a question, but I hope that it gives you an idea. But I think if the will of the commission was to continue it a week, I think you can. But at this point, there hasn't really been a reason articulated for what you would consider as to alternatives that weren't proposed by the Planning Commission recommendation.
Yeah, I mean, so this was heard in the Planning Commission on September 20th, and before, and I know this has been ongoing. I've gotten emails. And one of the first things I told everybody on both sides was get together and talk about this months ago. Some of that has happened. I'll say I think there will be the need to continue to do that ongoing regardless of whether we approve it today or not, but.
Commissioner Renzo, if I may, just to, as Dale pointed out, the applicant in this matter has requested, he's had two different continuances on this item. I'm not sure as to all the reasons behind that, but they did ask to have this continued. I think it was previously slated for an early November agenda, I believe.
How long, or how far in advance did the MAPC was information sent out or posted? I mean, I'm trying to get back, how far back did people know about this?
As to the first question, it was heard by the Planning Commission on September 20th. I'll let Dale answer when the notice would have gone out.
By state law, notices are sent out 20 days in advance of the Planning Commission meeting, and then they're required to post the sign on the property 13 days in advance of the Planning Commission meeting. So folks within 1,000 feet should have received an individual mailed notice, and then there would be the sign that if you drove by and looked at it, if you were outside that 1,000-foot radius, would have had an opportunity to notice that there was an application.
Right, okay. So I'd be willing to give the person that made the request for an extension, you know, an opportunity to explain, you know, what we might gain for another week. I know it sounds like a week, but we've been going on this for months, and we've had, already had a couple delays, and I think the applicant is entitled to, at some point, to move forward. But if there's a, I need more reason to delay. I mean, we've delayed things in the past, but if there's nothing new, I guess.
And Commissioner Renzo, I think I did leave out in my comments that one of the things that was mentioned was a restrictive covenant. Restrictive covenants are outside of the purview of the Planning Commission and the Board of County Commissioners on a zoning case. That's a private matter between parties if they agree to put a restrictive covenant on their property. So I guess that was mentioned, but that is really outside of the purview for the Board of County Commissioners in hearing this item.
Okay, that's helpful. I did read that in the email, that that was one of the suggestions. I didn't think that would be something, but if anyone has anything else to say as to why would you delay this for a week, or what we might gain, I'd be happy to entertain that. But if all we're going to get is another opportunity for people to talk, I'm not sure that's, I mean, and they needed to see an end here or a reason or what we're going to get out of this, I think, beyond what we've already gotten after this last few months. I'm sympathetic to people getting together and talking, but at some point, we've got to draw them on, I guess. That's all I have to say right now, unless, Commissioner, to hear what the other commissioners have to say, if there's anyone else who'd like to speak on this.
Okay. Commissioner Unruh?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think Commissioner Renzo verbalized my position on this also. If there was a specific reason for delay, I'd certainly be willing to yield that request. There's been enough time, I think, for conversation, and from the testimony today, it appears that a primary concern is not with this project itself, but the concern seems to be with what the future might bring. And I understand that. I understand those concerns and fears and how things evolve over time, so I'm sympathetic to it. But I think our decision right now is on the project itself, and I haven't heard any real protest on the project itself, and I haven't heard what we might gain by delay. So I'm, although I want to be sympathetic and willing to change my mind, but at this point, I'm thinking that we need to take care and act on this, on this agenda item.
Thank you. I don't see anyone else who wants to speak. I have not heard a good reason that we need to delay this. GO is the lowest level of any kind of commercial development that you can put on a piece of property, and I believe that it's probably the appropriate zoning if we need to put this type of facility in there. Commissioner Renzo, would you like to make any kind of motion?
Just one other question for Dale there. Now, in that area, there are some other businesses, is there not?
I believe there are what would be considered rural home occupations in the general area. I'm not aware of any commercial or office zoning in the immediate area.
Right. There's a restaurant and some things down the road.
Yes, yeah, closer, yeah, down in, yeah.
I actually think that this won't have a big impact on this, but I would, and I've told Mr. Bernhardt this before, make a concerted effort to be a good neighbor and communicate with people, I think will go a long way in this endeavor. So I guess at this time, I'll make a motion that we take the recommended action.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will be voting against this only because in some of my communications, I had indicated that I would be all right with delaying a week, but it's not a vote against the project. It's just trying to keep my word to individuals that I emailed. So, thank you.
Any further discussion? We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
No.
Commissioner Renzo?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye. Thank you.
Next item, please.
Item D, consideration of a resolution amending the debt financing policy.
Justin Waggoner, Assistant County Counselor. What's in front of you on this item is a resolution that proposes to amend the county's debt financing policy. Commissioner Renzo had requested that our office draft a document to state that if and when the county would refinance special assessments, those bonds, the economic benefit from that would be passed along to the property owners who are responsible for those special assessments. As a result, on page eight of the proposed amended debt financing policy, which is Exhibit A to the resolution, there's a paragraph that states that if special assessment bonds are refinanced, the economic benefit would annear solely to the benefit of the property owners who are responsible for the special assessments. It is worth mentioning that county's special assessment bonds, when the county does refinance bonds, are a very small portion of the overall total. It's usually other bonding the county takes part in. Lindsey Povrso, County CFO, could speak more directly and more specifically to that, if you have any questions. The document that's in front of you would be forward-looking, be in the next tax year that would be feasible based on the tax calendar that's established under the Kansas statutes. And then also on page five, changes have been proposed to the paragraph entitled "Special Assessment Bonds." In particular, there's changes that are proposed to make this consistent with Charter Resolutions Number 61 and 62, which deal with special benefit districts. Also, finance staff has incorporated some suggested changes on best practices language in terms of monitoring considering bond refinancing opportunities. The recommended action is to adopt the resolution and the amended policy, and County CFO Lindsey Povrso and I would be happy to stand for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Renzo?
Well, thank you, Justin. I just want to say, obviously, I'll be supportive of this. This came about when we heard about a lawsuit with the city of Wichita that alleges that they refinanced some special financing and then pocketed the savings as opposed to returning it to the landowners. I think the commissioners here were pretty much all unanimous in saying that we wanted our policy to be exactly this, that it goes back to the landowners, and so we initiated this to get it in our policy to make sure it was clear moving forward. And we don't do this a lot, but this way, at some point in the future, if it happens, it's very clear, we'll make sure the savings gets back to the landowner. So with that, I'll make a motion that we take the recommended action and approve this.
Thank you.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. And again, I worked with Commissioner Renzo and staff on this issue. The main thing is that if we're savings, we want to make sure that that savings goes back to the owner of the property rather than to the Sedgwick County. We don't do it very often, as Justin said. There is one case right now that will be affected by this, from what I understand. The property owners of the property, I understand, are going to get back, reduce their property tax, I think, as I recall, $30, $40. But that's a significant amount to a lot of people to make sure that that goes back to them instead of to the general fund. So I definitely support this motion and the refunding of any debt. And the right way that it's going to work to make sure that people aren't confused is, it's just like if you mortgage your house. The day that you remortgage it, from that point forward, you're going to pay less money. So we don't go back in time because there was no savings to us back in time, but the day that we refinanced the bonds, from that day forward, the money will go back to the owner of the property at that time, so we don't go back and look at different homeowners that may have had the property before. It's just whoever owns it today, and in the future, we'll see the savings. Any further discussion on this? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Renzo?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Item E, report of the Board of Bids and Contracts, regular meeting of November 29, 2018.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director. The meeting that was conducted on November 29th results in one item for your consideration, and that item is the SWAT Team Tactical Gear for Sheriff's Office, and the recommendation is to accept the quote from Night Vision Devices Incorporated for a total amount of $59,484. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions you may have, and I recommend its approval.
Thank you. Any questions for?
Seeing none, Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the recommendation of the Board of Bids and Contracts.
We have a motion, and I'll second the motion. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau?
Aye.
Commissioner Howe?
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Consent Agenda.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tom Stills, Deputy County Manager, recommend you approve items F through I on consent.
Thank you. Move to approve Foxtrot through India? Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau?
Aye.
Commissioner Howe?
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Next item, please.
Legislative Issues.
For other, one thing I want to mention, that's what you called, right?
No, sir, Legislative Issues.
Oh, I'm sorry, Legislative Issues. I skipped one, I beg your pardon. But do we have legislative issues to talk about today?
Not that I'm aware of, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. You worked on some legislative issues yesterday.
Yes, we did. Commission met in a staff meeting and went through a number of issues that we're looking at putting on our platform, and I believe that'll come back before your next regular scheduled meeting.
Very good. Commissioner O'Donnell?
I have some legislative issues that, they kind of bleed into other, but I was able to be in speak on Monday. We had, they had the House leadership elections, and Sedgwick County is now home to the majority leader with Dan Hawkins, which is great for us, minority leader with Tom Sawyer, which is great for our county. Susan Humphries was elected the caucus chair for the House Republicans, and Lake Carpenter was elected majority whip for the Republicans. So both Republican and Democrat, Sedgwick County is very well covered. It shows that we have a lot of gravitas and hopefully some firepower up there to help the residents of our whole community move forward, push things like our legislative agenda we talked about yesterday. But we haven't had a majority leader in the Kansas House since 1992, so it's been, it's been a while since we've actually had somebody in House leadership that high, and it was actually Tom Sawyer, who was the minority leader, was the last majority leader. So it's good news for our community.
Very good. Very good. Yeah, well, unfortunately, I missed the legislative discussions that we had yesterday, and I'll talk about it in other, on why I wasn't there, but I look forward to working the legislative issues this year. Does anyone else want to speak on legislative issues? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, now what do you have?
Other.
Other, thank you. I have a couple of things that I want to talk about on other. The first, most important, I think, is today, our nation is mourning the loss of our President George Bush. He holds a very dear place in the hearts of many folks. He actually hosted the WSU baseball team when they won the NCAA championship while he was the president, so we want to recognize him especially for that, that he does recognize Wichita and Wichita State. The other thing is, I served during the Cold War, during the entire Cold War. President Reagan set up the end of the Cold War, but it actually ended under President Bush. One of the important things that happened in my life was that I was commander of a squadron in Montana, and we had 200 ICBMs on alert, 200 nuclear tipped Minuteman missiles. And as the Cold War ended, President Bush sent, noticed us that he wanted to take 150 of those off alert immediately. That's no easy task to take 150 nuclear missiles off alert immediately. The men and women in my squadron went out and had to enter every one of those launch facilities, all 150 of those launch facilities, and manually safe those missiles so they could not be launched by the missile combat crew. It was testament to George Bush's leadership that he was able to do that, and it not only happened at White, miles from where I was stationed, it happened at Whitman, it happened at Ellsworth. We took a lot of nuclear weapons off alert in one weekend, and this happened on a weekend where most people think they're having the day off. We're traveling over 26,000 square miles, that's the area that those missiles covered, to enter a nuclear facility that takes a lot to enter, it takes security to be able to get into it, it takes a special team to be able to enter it, and we did 150 of those over a weekend because of the President's direction to help us end the Cold War. So I want to thank President Bush for his leadership as President of the United States during a very important time in our history. I think that even though he was a one-term president, he's going to go down as one of the greater presidents that we've had, and I want to put my comments, I know that a lot of organizations shut down today, and we had a lot of important things to accomplish, but I wanted to make sure that we recognized President Bush. And some other folks may want to comment in a minute. I want one other thing, as long as I've got the table. I missed the Legislative Agenda meeting yesterday because I traveled over to Reno County because they're looking at a possibility of putting some wind farms in along the border of Sedgwick County, right up to the border between Reno and Sedgwick County. And I had a number of citizens in Sedgwick County contact me that they were concerned about this issue, and so I went over, and what I learned was that I didn't know what I didn't know when I went into that meeting. There are so many issues that are involved in wind farms, and I was totally amazed. There are terms that I don't understand today. I don't know what flicker is, don't even know what happens, but it's something that impacts the health and well-being of neighbors. So there's a ton of different issues that are involved, and I'm not sure that Sedgwick County is even prepared at this point in time if a wind farm decided that they wanted to come into Sedgwick County. So I've sent out a fairly lengthy email to a whole lot of our staff yesterday afternoon with the issues that I'd made notes on yesterday, and I'm sure that there are issues that I don't know at this point in time, because as I said, I don't know what I don't know. But it's going to take some work and study from our, Dale Miller, who was here from our Planning Department, from our MAPD Department, from our Appraisers, even health is going to have to be involved in it because there is health issues involved in this. So there's a ton of issues involved in wind and possibly solar farms that I'm not aware of at this point in time. Again, I don't know what I don't know, but we need to start taking a look at that from Sedgwick County's perspective. One of the, one of the things that I was told on Monday afternoon before I went over there on Tuesday was there's a possibility that there are already leases in Sedgwick County for people to start putting wind farms in Sedgwick County. So I went down and asked Tanya Buckingham, our Register of Deeds, just do a real quick cursory look, are there any leases in Sedgwick County? And in a matter of minutes, we popped up three, and that was enough for me to be confirmed that there are already leases in Sedgwick County that people are thinking about the possibility of putting wind farms here. So if that is a possibility in the future, we need to be prepared for it, and I'm not certain that we're prepared for it at this time, and that's what I've asked the staff to do, is to take a look at this issue and get back with us to make sure that we understand what we need to know and so that I do know what I need to know. Anyway, those are the two issues I want to talk about. Again, I want to make sure that we honor the legacy of President Bush. Anyone else have anything that they'd like to say in other? Seeing nothing? Madam Clerk, next item.
Executive Session.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session for 10 minutes until 10:10 for consultation with an attorney for this commission, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship to discuss a potential settlement of a claim, and that the Board of County Commissioners return to this room from executive session no sooner than 10:10.
Okay. I will second the motion. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau?
Aye.
Commissioner Howe?
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
We are adjourned? Not adjourned, recessed, sorry.
Between the thin red line, the thin blue line, and the thin white line lies the thin gold line. This nervous of lines represents those who are rarely seen, but always heard and appreciated. The calm voice in the dark, the heroes behind the scenes, the golden glue that holds it all together, 911 dispatchers.
Sedgwick County 911, what is your emergency?
The 911 dispatcher is essential. When I'm en route to a call, they're continuously giving us updates, so I know what's going on before I get to the call. And then when I arrive at the call, sometimes I'm the only person, so they're my eyes and ears when I can't be.
One thing that drew me in the most is I love helping people, and then I started and realized that I love how much we help people, and the excitement every day is different.
911 dispatchers are extremely important to Sedgwick County Fire Department. They're the first ones on scene. They're the ones that have the first contact with our citizens that are having this emergency. They are the ones who notify what units need to go to a particular emergency. They're the ones who tell us how many units need to go. They were a vital success to the outcome of all the calls that we run. We couldn't do that job without them.
I really wanted to be that person after you go through something really traumatic and you have to call 911, and then you finally get that calm voice, and you're like, okay, it's going to be okay.
Hectic, but very rewarding, because you never know what's going to happen on that next phone call, whether you're going to be saving a life.
Favorite part about the job is the adrenaline. I love the fast pace when things are getting busy, when we're getting chases, or when we're, you know, really helping someone that I know needs to help.
If you're interested in being the first, first responder, email, work for 911@sedgwick.gov or call 660-4977 for more information.
Wichita was built on a flood plain. Early settlers even called the area from hillside to ridge road swampland. In the 1800s, several large floods hit the area, but it wasn't until after the 1944 flood that left more than 5,000 temporarily homeless, the city started a flood control committee. That's where M.S. Mitch Mitchell, or Big Ditch Mitch, comes into the story. After just 10 days on the job as an office engineer, he was sent out into the field.
They made me wade through about a foot and a half of water. Now, I'm in my office dress and shoes, and they made me wade through the water to get to the road where the drive was.
And what started out as a six-week commitment to the project led to a lifelong career with the City-County Flood Control Office.
A lot of planning went into how many of those local flooding systems can be incorporated in that particular project, and the floodway was the only way to do it.
But convincing everyone it was a good idea was another story.
There was a tremendous amount of objection to the acquisition of right-of-way for that. We don't have any flooding up here, and you're ruining my field, and you're cutting off the highway, and all of those things, that they did not recognize the importance of that diversion.
The design for the Wichita Valley Center floodway was modeled after one Mitchell saw in California.
They were very helpful. They sent us their manuals for construction of the lining, for the maintenance of the lining, how these things should be under-drained system, so they gave us the design work for what you see on the paved canal now. The main project was the diversion of the Little Arkansas River, some water from the Chisholm Creek system, and some water from the Arkansas River through what became known as the Big Ditch. There were people said, you can't do that. You can't put that little river water in the big river. Well, we did.
And that Big Ditch has been his legacy. Tony Giuliano is the Art Director for Sedgwick County. You've probably seen his work, but when he's not designing for the county, he's got his whistle on the soccer pitch.
He looked at me and he said, you're skinny, you're young, you can run, you should ref soccer, and 15 years later, I'm still doing it.
Moving up the ranks.
And it's opened up a lot of doors for me. I ref at the local level, and the Juco, and the NAI levels, all the way up to Division One.
Achieving a collegiate-level national badge.
It's exhilarating. I really enjoy that challenge. I mean, at that level, you're reffing the best athletes.
Refing around 60 matches a year.
You'll find a common phrase in the referee community, it's "for the love of the game." Soccer, to a lot of us, is a big part of our lives, whether played it, watch it, or referee it, or all three, and it's given back to the game.
Something that helps ease the stress of his day job.
It just allows me to challenge, or to accept and really take on any challenge and a stressful environment at work. It kind of is easy after running six to eight miles in a match and getting yelled at from everybody.
Crediting Sedgwick County for allowing him to pursue both of his passions.
It's a neat honor. I've gotten to travel to do some really high-level games, work with referees across the United States. It's just been a very rewarding second career, if you will.
If you've ever needed a snack while visiting the Sedgwick County Courthouse, you've probably seen Wes Brummer. He and his wife Debbie run the Snack Zone. Brummer also furnishes all the vending machines in the county. But when he's not keeping us fed, he spends his time writing historical fiction.
I grew up in a family that liked to tell stories. My folks grew up during the Depression.
That's part of what inspired his book, Dust and Roses.
It's basically about a young woman who takes a big fall, and the rest of the story is her redeeming herself.
Writing hasn't come without challenges. Brummer was born with severe low vision.
Describing color, that was probably one of my weaknesses in the story. I didn't put enough color description.
But that's never stopped him. He sold about 150 copies of Dust and Roses, which can be found in the Snack Zone or on Amazon, and he's working on his second book.
My character is a German prisoner of war that finds himself in Camp Concordia.
He hopes to have it complete by summer of 2018. Habitat for Humanity provides opportunities for families to achieve affordable home ownership.
The volunteers, we don't have the hands to reach out to recruit the families. We don't have the hands to go and meet with these families and help them along their journey.
One of those volunteers is Sedgwick County employee Greg Gann.
Next thing you know, I'm on three committees, and here it is 10-plus years later, and it's just a great fit for me.
Gann serves on the Home Buyers Committee, reviewing applicants and doing onsite home visits.
He is always enthusiastic and excited to introduce families, to tell their story, and to talk about not only the challenges that they face, but how they overcame those challenges.
You realize just how difficult it is for families to find clean, safe, affordable housing in good neighborhoods where they can raise their family without much care. These houses are filled with love. It doesn't matter if you don't know which end of a hammer to use, we'll find something that fits your ability, and you can participate.
Having volunteers like Greg, who are committed, who are willing- who are willing to give of their time, their talent, their treasure, we can't ask for anything more. It's truly a blessing.
Wow, every day is a great day. I come to the job sites, we go on home visits, we meet. I can't think of a bad day, not once. It's truly been life-changing for me.
If you're hurt, you want help to come fast. That's where these bikes come in.
We're able to fit into places that ambulance can't.
The Sedgwick County EMS Bike Team was started in 2009 with the help of grants and community donations. Crew members must try out to be part of the team.
I love coming down here to River Fest and helping out. I love biking. So just kind of combining two of my loves together.
Then they work in two-person crews. Additional support is provided with this. It's how patients are transported out of the crowd after the bike team provides treatment. It's also proven to be faster and more cost-effective.
Our response times are one-tenth of what they used to be down here. And we're using 75% less personnel to get the job done.
And provides a great opportunity for the public.
Just being able to interact with the community, I think, is pretty awesome. They could've come up and asked us a lot more questions. We're a little bit more accessible than we are in the ambulances usually. So we get to see a lot more of the people and hang out with the kids.
This time, I'd like to call the meeting back to order for Wednesday, December 5, 2018. Mr. Papun, do you have any comments?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and point out that no binding action was taken in executive session today. You have before you a copy of an agreement and release between Sedgwick County and Mr. Scholes, Sedgwick County Manager. The highlights of this agreement and release are as follows. Mr. Scholes agrees to resign effective November 30, 2018, which is last Friday. He releases the county waiver discharge of all claims he can possibly bring against the county for any reason whatsoever. And he, and the county, in consideration of getting a full waiver and release for Mr. Scholes and for his resignation, is going to pay Mr. Scholes a lump sum amount of $205,427, less all appropriate taxes and withholdings required by law. He is receiving no other benefits that he's entitled to during his employment with the county. No vacation or leave or any other allowances, car allowances, cell allowances, or anything. That lump sum amount is the entire amount that's going to be paid to Mr. Scholes. He has seven days to revoke. He signed the agreement. He has seven days to revoke the agreement under the Older Workers Benefit Protection Act and Uniformed Services Employment and Reemployment Act of 1994. So the agreement, he will not be paid any sum of money until the seven days has passed pursuant to the agreement. And as part of the agreement, the both parties, Mr. Scholes and Sedgwick County, have agreed to issue a joint statement from the bench. That's to be the entire statement regarding, the official county statement regarding his past employment at Sedgwick County. Be happy to answer any further questions if you have.
Any questions, Mr. Papun? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we take the recommended action and approve the agreement and release.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
No.
Commissioner Ranza?
Aye.
Commissioner Howe?
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
No.
Next item, Mr. Papun?
Next item is to consider what to do now that Mr. Scholes is no longer the county manager with the position of the county manager.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we appoint Mr. Tom Stoltz, who is currently our Deputy County Manager, as interim county manager until further action is taken.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranza?
No.
Commissioner Howe?
No.
Commissioner Unruh?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Does anyone else have anything else that needs to be come before the board today? Have anything?
About the statement.
Oh, I'm sorry. Beg your pardon. We do have something else. I have a joint statement that was agreed to between both Mr. Scholes and Sedgwick County. And it states, "Both parties have agreed that it was in Sedgwick County and Mr. Scholes' best interest to part ways. It's time for both parties to look towards the future. I look forward to finishing out this year strong and serving our residents. It's especially important to thank our great staff, who have continued to focus their efforts and energy on delivering needed services to our citizens." Thank you. Anything else need to come before the board today? Seeing nothing, adjourned. Thank you, everyone.